Our screen, so I'll start. I'm Janet Anderson and I'm calling to order the Town of Lewisboro Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, May 19th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Before I go any further, I will confirm that Kirsten has started recording this meeting. And the meeting is happening via Zoom with live streaming to YouTube on the Lewisboro TV channel. The public can view the meeting there and we have confirmed that the feed is active and working. Note that in accordance with the Governor's executive orders, no one is at our usual meeting location at 79 Mountain. I have confirmed again with Kirsten, our Planning Board Administrator, that the meeting has been duly noticed. Legal notice requirements have been fulfilled. Notice has been placed on the Town of Lewisboro website and included in email distributions from the town and the library. And it's been posted on Facebook. With me on the Zoom conference from the Town of Lewisboro are Jerome Kerner, Greg LaSorsa, Rich Sklarin, and myself. I do not yet see Maureen McGuire, but we still have a quorum and we can vote on any matters that come before the board because we are at that quorum. Also on the, on the meeting right now are Consultant Jan Johanessen and Council Jethson Seibert. Obviously Planning Board Administrator Kirsten Conrad and the CAC Chair John Wall. These continue to be uncertain and stressful days and we, the Planning Board, continue to function on behalf of the town to the best we can. The Governor's Executive Order 202.1 has enabled us to meet remotely and electronically. In accordance with the executive order, we intend to post both the recording and later a transcript of this meeting to the town website. And of course, actions will be documented in meeting minutes. We have public hearings scheduled for tonight. And this is the only time we expect to take public comments. And as we start that portion of the meeting, I will describe the process. The public has joined muted and without video until that point. We ask any applicants that are not currently engaging in dialogue to their lines. This will help everyone hear over the inevitable background noises. To those whose lines are open, I remind you that we should do our best to avoid crosstalk. Tonight applicants, if you can refrain from addressing the board until the board or the consultants direct a specific question to you or stay muted until called upon. And when we vote, I will again poll the board members individually. I want to thank everybody in advance for understanding as we continue learning. So let's get started and I'm going to allow Tracy into the meeting. Okay, so the first item on our agenda is an extension of time request. Calendar number 07-19 PB for JJE33 Holdings to JJE33 Lot Lane Change on Old Ascleed in South Salem, New York. So, and I believe that Michael is here to tell us about the need for the extension.
Okay, good evening all. I represent Holdings and we have filed this plat with the County Clerk's Office. And I have delivered a deed for the two small parcels that are getting shifted from holdings back to no holdings, JJE33. I've delivered that deed to the title company. I have not seen proof of recording. I probably owe Kirsten some copies of the filed plat. And I guess proof of the deed recording. So those are the only open items. As far as I know.
And you would like an extension for, I think last time we only gave 60 days because we thought this would be done.
All right, and it may well be done, but so 30 days is fine. I can't imagine it's going to take more than that.
I have a question. Should we do, I mean, I'm willing, I'm willing to do 90 days just to see.
Okay. I'll take 90.
I mean, just to get, get us through if, I mean, I'll, I'll ask the board if they have any comments that on this and whether I know it's just, I'm, I'm more concerned about the fact that with COVID, we don't know how long things are going to take to process.
True.
I'm comfortable with 90 days. It's fine.
Okay. I don't hear anybody else. You want to make a motion to that effect?
Make a motion to extend this for 90 days.
That was break and it was seconded by Jerome. Any further discussion? Okay, I'm going to poll for favor and I'm going to go, I look at my boxes here. So Gregory, you're first on the screen.
I, yes.
Rich?
I.
Jerome?
Yes.
And of course I'm an I as well. And right now Maureen is absent. Okay. The next item on our agenda is a special use, use permit renewal for Sapientia Association. And I apologize if I didn't get that name right. Who is? Okay, yes. All right, great. So we need to unmute. You. So.
Hi.
Hi.
Chairwoman Anderson, members of the board. My name is Michael LaCory. I'm a partner at Hogan and Rossi, Bruce, New York. I represented Sapientia on its application for its special use permit approximately two and a half years ago. Sapientia purchased the property from the Jewish Congregational Church. Over the last two and a half years, we believe they've had a very seamless transition onto the property. We've accomplished all the requirements of the original special use permit. There were some items that were required to be performed. Post closing, I'm sorry, post approval.
Sorry, we're going to get, I think that's Michael's.
Yeah, looks that way.
Okay. I apologize.
Nope, totally fine. So the special permit was granted for a period of three years, which we believe was identical to the first time that the Jewish Congregational Church received its special permit.
Jewish family congregation, you mean?
I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, Jewish family congregation. Thank you. And in connection with, with, with our renewal request, we're a little bit early. We, we were set to expire in September, but we were very thankful for you to host us now in May, you know, under the circumstances. We've received Jan's review memo. We've submitted the, the open. There was one item for water testing that was required to be submitted. We've submitted that. I don't know if Jan has had a chance to review because we've only submitted that just recently, but we've accomplished all of the items that were required to be accomplished. And you have our request for our renewal.
So as we talk through the, Jerome would like to say something.
Well, I'd like to make a motion unless you want to say something before that.
Um, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we approve this. That we approve this extent of this special use without further examination, without further need for renewal. I base it on the fact that there are enough protections within the existing conditions. And if there's any violation of it, it would become a building department concern. For example, if there were more cars parked and, and if they were on the road or if there were a tent erected over a period, over the time that was not permitted. So I think that, and, and the record they've had so far is clean. There's no reports of any problems from police or highway department. So I would recommend, my motion would be to approve especially without further need for future.
I'd second that.
Okay, so I probably should have stopped you ahead of time. We, I believe because we are required to have a public hearing. Just based on the special, because the fact it is a special use permit and I don't believe we can waive that. Judd? Oopsie. All right, did we, are we muting him or?
He can unmute himself.
Yeah, now, okay, now I'm on you. Great. There was a, there was a lot, no, we, as, as a result of both the code provision pertaining to special permits and our original approval, we, we do need to conduct a public hearing on this. So my recommendation would be just to schedule it for June and to have Jan draft a resolution. You know, with regard to the extension.
Well, yeah, my motion was not about this particular instance, but the, the extension and future. In other words, do we need to continue to have hearings for, for?
Well, yeah, but the, 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 the permit itself is going to expire in September. It needs to be renewed and that renewal process necessitates again, by both virtue of the original approving resolution and the code, a public hearing before you can renew. So because you're basically reissuing the special permit. And I think as you proceed to issue that renewal, you can, as a board, determine whether you want to continue to place a time requirement for them to come back. You can, you, you don't need to impose that. You can make it longer than three years, but the, we have to go through the portal of a public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so we have Jerome's option once we go forth with the formality of the public hearing, which we have to do.
Yeah, the, and then, and then it's a question of it's a question of, of whether you want to continue to have a time constraint on the permit or ultimately the JFC special permit was one with, you know, an indefinite timeframe and was subject to, you know, continued monitoring by the building department.
Can we, can we get it? I'm sorry, Judd.
Yeah.
Can we get a consensus on whether or not the board feels the need to approve this without, without limitation or without need for further extension? So that if we do prepare a resolution, that'll be there? Or do we have to discuss that all after a public hearing?
I think, yeah, I think it's open for discussion now, really.
Okay.
Yeah, my, my only issue is I'm sure what Jerome was saying is correct, just that maybe we could just get verification. There haven't been any complaints or issues since this special permit was initially issued. If we have confirmation with that, that's no problem for me.
We do. We saw the documentation submitted to us.
Okay. Oh, that was, okay. So we got, all right. So I'm good.
Yeah, I think I would like to make sure that there's not, I mean, see if there are any public comments that discuss any concerns. I also think I went and looked at the Jewish family resolutions and I think they had a short one, a three year and then a five year and then got the unlimited. So I think if we hear any concerns from the community, I'm certainly willing to go with maybe a longer one, like 10 years or something that, that would but still gives us the ability to have the public come back and talk to us about what might be, what might be happening or, or if they have any concerns. But I can, I can go with the group.
All I was suggesting is that if there's a consensus among the board, then when the resolution is prepared, that would be in there. And if there is something that's mentioned at the hearing next month, I think we can, can, you know, we can certainly discuss that and discuss keeping that in or taking that out if necessary, but at least be prepared to, to do that.
So I have a question. Sorry I'm late, everyone. What is the burden if we only do not grant the, you know, kind of allowance into what it sounds like perpetuity, but we still have them come back every three to five years? Is the burden on them to hire an attorney, prepare this type of documentation to come before the planning board and time involved? So is it, is it legal expenses is, is the burden?
Yeah, yeah. I, my, my answer to that would be it's, it's primarily legal expense, if not all legal expense and you know, part of that is, is just making sure all documentation from any other sources that they need is in place. I think that what, what the prior approving resolution did, and I think it was modeled on the Jewish family congregation resolutions was that it provided for the renewal subject to following special permit requirements, which include a public hearing, but allowed the board to waive all of the underlying site plan documentation. So they don't have to engage you know, a surveyor or, 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 you know, you know, the engineer or planner to prepare plans. So that, that is spared. And then the, the cost is, you know, publication costs and noticing costs for the public hearing and the public hearing. I, I think the whole, the whole, the whole purpose was just, you know, of, of the periodic renewals was to provide the vehicle for the public hearing so that if there are some concerns that are not being picked up, you know, in the usual course through the building department or through sort of town channels that, you know, people would be given an opportunity to come in and, and say whatever they have to say.
I think the applicant wanted to say something, Mr. LaCory.
Yeah, thanks. I, I wasn't sure. I just didn't want to jump in. But so from a practical perspective, it's primarily legal cost. And, and you know, there's always the concern that you're lawfully operating, but you're having, you know, your subjective repeated public hearings where there may be concerns raised. But now you have to potentially jump through other hoops that maybe, you know, other special permit holders or recipients wouldn't have to. You know, for example, if we're limited to three years, but it's customary for the board to issue them for other uses for 10 years, then, you know, we're getting held to a, you know, a little bit more of a higher standard than, than customary. And that's really what it comes down to. It's, you know, it's, it's legal time and effort. And then these potential exposures that other, other uses may not have. You know, that we would have to deal with as they, as they come up on a more frequent basis. But I, I think the important thing here is there's evidence that, that we've been able to use the property but, you know, without any greater impact than its prior use. I think that'll get borne out hopefully in the public hearing. And we look forward to, you know, what, what, what the board decides.
Yeah.
Jerome?
Yeah, first of all, you know, they're, they're, they're good neighbors. They kept impeccable records of car parking. The Jewish family congregation had in in their history, what their, their needs were for special events like High Holy Days where there were like two or 300 cars or maybe more. And so, you know, that, that, that's really what caused the need for special permit. And it was a, of course it was not a residential use. But looking at the history there, you know, there were restaurants, there was a restaurant there before the family congregation, which is a much more intense use than we have here now. And so, you know, I would think that the combination of their record and the fact that they're made every effort to be a good neighbor, that, that's part of the record would indicate that we could extend that period either indefinitely or with a 10 year. But I think if we have consensus on that, as Greg said, maybe the resolution can be prepared in accordance with that and we can schedule a public hearing.
I agree with Jerome on this point. Either 10 years or unlimited based upon the fact that their use is not what JFC's was. It's fine by me. So we're going to have a hearing on this in June, right?
Yes.
That seems to be the, right? We'll be in a position at least, I mean, would, would we? Would we be in a position to discuss that after the hearing, assuming that the hearing's going to be closed that night?
Yeah, I think we ought to ask Jan to draft a resolution. I think that we can probably, you know, amend it one way or the other. I don't know whether it's easier to start with 10 and amend it to unlimited or start with unlimited and amend it to 10, but that seems to be the discussion.
I write it both ways and, I write it both ways and you could just remove whichever paragraph appropriate after your conversation at the June meeting.
Draft resolution A and draft resolution B.
Or A with clause, I mean.
Yeah, with a clause, yeah.
There'd be two different final resolve clauses. One will be for a 10 year period. One will be indefinite. You could, you could just strike the one that's not appropriate.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. So I think the only other thing that comes up with this, because I, I do think it's a good idea to move forward is to say, should we have it the same night as our regular meeting, which I would think we could do. We have, and then do we want to start again at seven and aim for the public hearing at 7:30? Or do we want to, you know, start at 7:30 as normal?
How's the calendar shaping up the agenda?
It's all depends upon what people, what applications come in. And I don't think we've seen much that has arrived yet.
7:30 should be fine, I think.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Well, are we going to have, are we going to have any continuation of these two hearings tonight?
We don't know.
Okay, well, why don't we, why don't we? Let's just see if we have to, if we have to move it to seven. Can we make that decision later and get in touch with Mr. LaCory?
Well, what we could do is say that the, the public hearing will be at 7:30 and if we decide we have enough that we want to have our meeting earlier, we could do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Probably the best way to do it.
Yeah, to pick the me, especially hearing at 7:30.
Okay.
But whatever you decide is, is fine with us. We, we appreciate the fact that you guys are operating via Zoom and making these things happen. So, you know, even if you decide later this evening at what time you're going to do it, it's perfectly okay with us. I'm, I'm sure Kirsten will just let us know tomorrow exactly what we're doing.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And, and Kirsten will get with you with the actual, the language is a little different because we have a public hearing via Zoom, et cetera, and she, so the public hearing notice, she'll get with that, that to you too.
Fantastic.
Perfect.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is Site Development Plan Review, Oak Ridge Commons, calendar number 08-17B. This is a, and this is at 450 Oak Ridge Common, South Salem. And this is a revision of an application that has been approved for a site plan for the installation of a car wash bay and an existing gas station. So the speaker on that is?
Bobby Birds.
Bob, there you are. You moved in the, one, one person went off the, the screen and everybody shifts. It's a little disconcerting. Okay.
We are back asking for change to the approved site plan. It's all right with you. I'll just share my screen and just show you a floor plan.
Did I, did we allow share, screen sharing?
Not allowed to do that?
I don't know.
Yeah, you can do it.
Yeah, I think we did. How else can I get their material?
Right.
Well, 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 is this something that hasn't been presented to us previously?
It's, it's, it's changed since it was presented, yes.
Part of the submission package.
If it's easier, I could share if you want.
Whatever you want me to do.
Well, if we have it, then I'm okay with the gentleman sharing.
We have it.
Okay.
Unsubmitted.
Go ahead. Okay. I've got to share screen in here. Sorry about that. Okay, so what, what was approved previously was the front of the addition of the car wash aligned with the front of the existing building. And what, what that caused was that the, the back of the building projected further back and the, the loop road to access the car wash came very, very close to Oak Ridge Drive. And we realized that from Oak Ridge Drive, the back of this building was very visible. I'll, I'll show it to you on a site plan. This one. So now we've pulled this forward.
Excuse me, sir.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not seeing anything on, are you sharing your screen?
Yes. Yeah, let's try again. Sorry.
That's okay.
Share screen. Now, can you see?
There it goes.
There you go.
Thank you.
Beg your pardon. Okay, so the front of the building was originally approved flush with the front of the existing building. And the, the back of the building, back of the additions projected back about six feet. We've proposed that the addition be slid forward so that the front of the building now projects four feet out and we've shrunk the building by two feet to allow us to have about six feet in the back of this loop road to plant some evergreen trees. That's the real crux, crux of the change. That's really the major thing that was done. So we've shrunk the building a little bit and slid it forward. The only other change was to the, the pylon sign, which is over in this corner. And we just made it two foot shorter than was previously approved. Reason we did that is to conform with the ZBA that gave us a variance to a 12 foot height. When you approved the last time, it was at 14 feet. Now we've dropped it down to, to 12 feet to conform with the ZBA approval, but it's the same sign effectively. You know, the last change was that in the canopy over the, over the pumps, we proposed a six square foot sign mounted in the canopy. Well, well, the tenant shell came back and said they don't want that. They just changed their mind, took that out. And so that sign is gone now. And I think that's a improvement, quite frankly. Shall I unshare at this point?
Sure.
Yes, so. So again, this is, oh, maybe I'll ask Jan to, to review his memo on this.
Mute.
About that?
Yep.
We didn't have any significant comments. We asked that all the previously proposed and approved plan sheet to be incorporated into the amended set. There was some couple of inconsistencies between the architectural site plans and those provided by the site engineer. Needed a bulk zoning table. Other than that, all the, the minor changes we found no issue with. We thought it didn't provide any impact to the, or negative impact to the overall function of the site, the improvement. The minor modifications would qualify for waiver of site development plan procedures. So would still require amended site development plan approval from the planning board, but it's a simpler process. Reduces the application process down to one step and the board has the ability to waive the public hearing. So at your discretion. We didn't see any adverse impacts from the, the proposed changes. It seemed fine.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, it's the question that we really need to figure out is whether we think that the changes are significant enough to have a public hearing or whether we want to waive that. So I'll look for any comments from the board on that.
Oh, I, I mean, I absolutely waive a public hearing. I think these are, it's an insignificant change. It actually enhances the view shed from the, you know, from the project behind to the building and yeah, it would be a waste of time and effort to have a public hearing.
I agree. Agreed.
Agree. Okay, so I think what we would do in this case is just ask for Jan to draft. is just ask for Yan to draft a resolution that contains the waiver and the approval of the site plan changes. And we would cover that next month. Is that, if, does everyone, we do this by consensus, as I remember. So let me poll just to make sure, Greg?
Yes.
Rich?
Yeah.
Jerome?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And I say yes as well, so, okay, so that's our plan. This will go on and in June with a draft resolution from Yan. Okay?
Our, our few minor comments in our memo could be made conditions. So just a box, you don't have to worry about resubmitting. It'll become conditions and they could be satisfied prior to the signing of the site plan. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks again for hearing us.
Thanks.
So we are just about on time. So it's now just about 7:30 and we're going to start public hearings now. We will, the purpose of a public hearing, just to remind everyone, it's for the board to hear concerns and comments of the public. Comments should be addressed to the planning board. A public hearing is not meant to be a dialogue and generally the board will not respond to comments at the public hearing. This is our standard practice and we must observe it when we meet remotely through this Zoom in order to allow for an orderly presentation of the comments and input and so that we can compile a somewhat coherent transcript of this meeting. The board will take public input into consideration as we review the application. Again, because of executive order 202.10, we are not meeting at a common location. We are holding the meeting via video and telephone. And that's in accordance with executive order 202.15. Before this meeting, we invited comment by email. And the public can comment during the hearing in a number of ways. I will remind anyone who might be watching on YouTube that we cannot get comments from YouTube. But you can either send an email to planning@lewisburg.gov.com at which Kirsten will be monitoring the email and so she can read these comments and present them to the board. In addition, the public can speak at this meeting. Now, if you want to speak at the meeting, you have to be on the Zoom meeting, not on, not on YouTube channel. And the way you do it is to raise your hand. So to do that, if you're on video on Zoom, if you put your cursor towards the bottom of the window, you should see an image of people labeled participants. Click on that to get a panel on the right hand side. And there are icons on that, on that right hand side panel at, towards the bottom part of it. You can then click raise hand. Participants who have raised their hand will show up on the host screen in the order that you raise the hand. The host will announce you and unmute you and tell you you have the floor. You may also have to unmute yourself if your microphone is currently active. If you dialed in on a phone, which I do not see anyone dialed in on a phone, but if someone has, you can raise your hand to indicate you want to talk by pressing star nine. We will ask people to give their name and address upon entering and to keep their comments to about three minutes, just so we can get through this meeting. And while I don't expect this to happen, someone who is disrespectful at this meeting will be asked to leave the virtual meeting just as they would be asked to leave a physical meeting. So the format here is the chair gives a brief overview of the application. That's me. The applicant will give a summary of the project. Planning board advisors will review their memos if any. We then have a public comment period and a discussion by the planning board. So the first public hearing that we have tonight is for Insight Wireless at Vista Fire Department, calendar number 3-09PB. This is at 377 Smith Ridge Road in South Salem, New York. And this is in the application for renewal of a special use permit. So I'm looking to see who is the, who is representing the, okay. Go ahead and.
Good evening, Honorable Chair and members of the board. Robert Gordioso with the law firm of Snyder and Snyder. On behalf of the applicant, Insight Wireless. As you mentioned, this is a special permit renewal. It includes both the application for the tower and for AT&amp;T and Sprint facilities that were originally installed on the tower. We did submit the cumulative radio frequency exposure report, the as-built drawings and also the updated structural report that I believe was reviewed by the town planner. We'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have this evening.
Okay, Yan, did you want to? I, I think we have a resolution. I guess maybe we should first look and see. So if anybody, any member of the public would like to make a comment on this, I described the way to raise your hand.
And to date, I have not received any written comments on Insight Wireless.
And I do not see anyone raising their hand. So, well, I guess Yan, you have a resolution? Or maybe let's see if anybody on the planning board has any comments first on this?
No, I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, so that was motion by Jerome and seconded by Rich. Any discussion? Okay, I'll do a poll. Greg?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And I also vote to close the public hearing. Okay. Yan, did you want to mention, go through the, the resolution?
It's a simple resolution. It's a special use permit renewal, a negative deck for Insight Wireless. The tower owner, along with New Singular Wireless and Sprint, all of which were on five-year renewals. The applicants submitted a variety of supporting documents and reports, which we reviewed. They're listed in the resolution, references to prior resolutions included. There, this resolution's a, another five-year renewal, which currently written for both the tower and the two wireless carriers. I believe at the last meeting, the board wanted us to look into whether the five-year renewal was a requirement of any prior resolution or in the code. We did that, we also discussed this with Judd. I think the, the conclusion is it's not a requirement. It's common practice of the board. I think, and obviously up for more discussion, if the board was inclined, we could consider continuing to have the tower facility on five-year or some sort of renewal process. But I'm not sure it's necessary to have individual carriers continue to go through the five-year renewal, especially because now that the town's changed its law, you could actually co-locate on a tower without going to the planning board. It's a simple building permit. The laws have kind of changed. I think it, it's becoming a bit of a administrative task to, to track all of these things. And, and the fact of the matter is, you know, I'm not sure how much we're gaining from it. Having the tower owner come, set the plan so we can continue to see that maintenance is being done on the tower and the compound area and the fence and the access drive. That all seems to make sense to me, but I'm not sure that we continuously track the individual carriers. So if the board was looking to simplify the process going forward, that would be my recommendation.
Yes, I, this is something that Yan and I discussed earlier. And I think both because in sort of keeping with the, the federal directions to simplify the provision of wireless carry, you know, towers. And with the fact that the, the co-locators on this really don't have much of an impact on the, on the tower. If the tower needs maintenance, it's really going to be talking to the tower owner. So, and, and in keeping with the way we're kind of discussing, maybe not having things come back quite so often. I, I would certainly be willing to say that we just give the five-year renewal to the insight and for the, for the co-locators to say they do not have to come back for renewal. But I'll, I'll also take, see what other people think as well.
I don't really have a, an opinion on this against it. And, you know, the way Yan laid it out sounds reasonable to me.
Okay, that was Greg. Go ahead.
So Jerome, I have a question regarding periodic inspections. And could there be some kind of an escrow that would cover inspections, let's say every three to five years? And that would protect the site and so forth for any degradation? And the only need to come back would be as if there was an issue. Is that, is that feasible? I guess I'm asking Judd and Yan, you know, have an escrow fee that would cover inspection fee, periodic inspections.
The way it's been done as of late is we've had them back every five years. When they come back for the renewal, we conduct a site visit and we evaluate the site, make sure everything's being properly maintained. So the site visit kind of comes along with that.
I understand.
And I, yeah, I, I think Jerome, the better course would be just to have a, a, you know, a periodic renewal for the owner. You know, establishing an escrow fee for something that is, you know, ultimately just the standard building department function of, you know, keeping an eye on things and, and making sure that the site's in compliance. It's an appropriate imposition as part of the special permit on the tower owner. The better course is just to keep a handle on it, as, as Yan said, with, you know, three, five years, five years or longer, whatever, you know, whatever, whatever the board feels is appropriate.
Robert, it looked like you had a comment.
No, I, I agree with both Judd and Yan. I think the suggestion from the board was a great one. What we do as part of the renewals, we submit the structural report, which confirms the tower is structurally sound. A, an escrow probably wouldn't really satisfy the process because the town, even if it had the escrow, wouldn't be able to itself independently verify the structural report. So I think it does make sense to, you know, indefinitely extend the carriers and, and only bring back the tower owner with this, this type of review rather than an escrow.
Okay, so do we have any other comments on that?
There's also indemnifications running in favor of the owner anyway, so makes sense, right?
I, yeah, so I guess I'm looking for a motion to, well, we would ask Yan to slightly amend the, the resolution to include that the, I guess Singular and Sprint would be, would not have an expiration date on their renewal.
And that, that, I think Janet, if, if you have the resolution, that would just be taking the, the first, or the, the last paragraph on page two, which is the effective, you know, issuance of the special permit and breaking that into two separate resolved clauses. The first would be the special use permit for the tower facility owned and operated by Insight Wireless Group LLC is hereby renewed for a period of five years, right? And then a second that the special use permit for the wireless telecommunication, telecommunications equipment owned by New Singular and Sprint is hereby renewed, you know, indefinitely. It's a, it's just a very simple change. I think the board could authorize that to be made and, and go ahead and approve the resolution.
So do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
That was Maureen. Do we have a second?
Second.
That was Rich. Okay, so any further discussion? So I will call a poll of the board again. Greg?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And I also vote in favor of the resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time and thanks for working through these issues by Zoom. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so the second public hearing that we have tonight is calendar number 0220. It's a public hearing on Mandia Residences at 65 Old Bedford Road in Golden's Bridge. It is an application to convert the former Golden's Bridge Community House into four one-bedroom apartments. And again, I will, in case there are people that have joined since there, if you want to, I, I still don't see anyone who is on a phone, but if you're on a phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. If you are on the video and you want to talk, you can raise your hand by moving your mouse towards the bottom of the, the cursor towards the bottom of the window. There will be participants, click on that and there should be an icon that allows you to raise your hand. And we will see who wants to talk by, that will be visible to Kirsten and I, who are both able to see this list. And I, so I guess first I will ask the applicant to give a summary of the project. And I'm not sure who is going to start with this. Michael, you're muted, Michael. It looks like you are muted yourself now.
Okay.
Okay.
Got it.
All right, good evening, Michael Serniano. I represent Bruce Mandia and Margaret, Meg, Carrie. Bruce and, and Meg have long and deep ties to our town in general and Golden's Bridge in particular. I went through their long CVs at the last meeting. I, I don't think I need to, to do that again tonight. But this, they are very excited about this proposal. It's to repurpose, to convert the iconic Golden's Bridge Community House to four one-bedroom rental apartments. This proposal was made possible by recent zoning amendments. They were adopted in late 2019 by the town board that now allow up to a maximum of four residential units in an R2F 7.5 zoning district as a special use. Your board will remember you asked to be the reviewing agency for this specific type of special use. And in doing so, you ignored the old adage of be careful what you ask for because the town board entrusted you, the planning board, not the zoning board, to handle these applications. The, we, we have been working with your board and Yan on the site development plan approval aspects of this project. And we have made considerable progress. The getting back to the special use aspect of this proposal, new section two twenty forty-three point eight sets for ten specific conditions for this type of special use, and we believe our proposal meets all of those conditions. So really, the focus of our efforts and the boards and and your consultants have been on the site planning aspects. And I'm going to, in a minute, turn it over to our project team members, Ed Delaney of Bibo Associates, Tracy Chalapho, our landscape architect. And we also have our our building architect, Samuel Gardner, available if there's any questions from the public or the board. Before I do that, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. The last permit we need from your board, in addition to the special permit and the site plan development approval, is a town stormwater permit. Ed Delaney will address his latest stormwater design. I know he's been working with Jan and and Joe on on that aspect. And Ed will also address his new septic design. Your board referred us to ACARC, which is one of the ten conditions of the special permit. In last week, I believe Samuel Gardner and Tracy Chalapho made a presentation to ACARC. I'm told I was not part of the Zoom meeting, that it was well received and in fact approved by ACARC. So the I I don't believe we need any variances. Jan correctly identified that our plans submitted indicate that our driveway was fifteen feet in width and sixteen feet is the minimum, however, and Ed will address this in more detail. Ed Delaney recently went out and measured the existing McAdam driveway and confirmed that it is at least sixteen feet. So I don't believe we're we're going to need variances there. And of course, Jan can verify that and probably the building inspector as well. Lastly, the building inspector has, I believe, noted that a loading area is not shown on our plans, and it's not shown on purpose because we don't believe our low-intensity residential use really requires a loading zone. UPS and FedEx trucks can get to these four tenants just as easily as they get to other homes in the hamlet. I don't believe we need a specific loading area. What we certainly don't want to do is is either increase the McAdam area to to make a loading area or use up existing McAdam that might be better used for parking or other landscaping purposes for a loading dock. My understanding of the code is that the planning board can waive this requirement, and we would ask the board to do that. So that's really my introduction. I'm going to ask Ed Delaney to explain where he is with his stormwater design and his septic system and border health approvals, and then we'll go to Tracy.
Well, I don't know if it's appropriate for the neighbors and the public that are here to express their concerns about stormwater or septic with Mr. Rogers here, who's the next-door neighbor. But I I want to address that because what we did right up front is determine that the boys and girls school that used to occupy this building had their own separate bathrooms, their own separate sewer lines, no septic tanks, and went directly into big, deep cesspools in the front of the building. That was a very interesting conversation with the County Health Department and the New York City DEP, who said they would not approve of four one-bedroom apartments until we addressed that issue. We did address that issue by soil testing. We made a comprehensive design and submission to the County Health Department, which is an oversized tankage system and a very modern septic system that is under review right now by the County Health Department and the New York City DEP. Placed the old cesspools that are there. I talked to the engineers on both sides this week. Approvals are forthcoming. If it wasn't for downtime on their part, I'm sure I would have gotten them by now, but I want to assuage everybody that cesspools are, you know, they're all over Croton Falls and Golden's Bridge and Katona and Pepperd Hills. But we're lucky enough here to be able to replace them by a low-impact, more modern septic treatment system. With that being said, let me switch over to stormwater. And I believe Mr. Rogers is concerned about that. Over the last sixty years, there's been no stormwater treatment on this site at all. It's dead flat. It's paved. The roof runoff right now just runs over the ground or into the ground with no treatment. All the water that falls onto the town pavement that's this town-owned building, it just goes into the lawn and overflows to certain other areas. But the good thing about it is in this section of Golden's Bridge, we have very deep sands and gravel. We confirmed that last week with a deep test pole in front of the town engineer. Kellard Sessions was witness to that, which confirmed that we have as far, I'm not going to say we can dig to China, but we do have very coarse sands and gravel and cobbles. Goes for vertical. So for all these years, fifty, sixty, seventy years, the stormwater is flowing off this building, and the parking lots have been able to be going to the ground vertically. However, what we've do, what we've done here is our first design and pass-through was to capture all the roof water on this existing school building. And remember, we're not doing any additions here. So we're taking all the existing gutter from the roof, and we're putting them into a groundwater infiltration treatment system. So that would lessen the runoff to the adjacent lawn areas and neighbors, if there was any. And we are now designing a collection to take some of the pavement off the rear, which now also runs off and bring that into the same infiltration system. We believe we can be successful in that, and we believe with discussions with Jan, that we will be taking a portion of pavement and all the roof that used to run all over the place and bring it into the ground in a very deep infiltration practice. We found out that the driveway is sixteen feet wide. And that are our drawings coming up. Remember, we are removing well over a thousand feet of pavement and replacing it with incredible amount of trees and bushes and to kind of lessen this beast of a building and make it look more of a residential building. But I can have Tracy, our landscape architect, talk to that. But with that, chairman should understand that we will open this up to the public, and I'd love to hear their comments on this. Can't hear you, Janet.
Sorry. Yeah, Tracy, did you want to make a comment directly, or should we go to the public hearing? I didn't know if there was whether Ed.
I'm sorry. There have been very few changes to the site plan. I can summarize those briefly, or we can go directly to the public, whatever your preference is.
You want to screenshot, share this, Tracy? Would you like to look at?
Yes, I I'm actually going to share a color rendering of here it is, of sheet L one. Okay, can you all see that?
Yes. Yep.
So so this is sheet L one colored, and I would just like to point out the few changes that have been made since our last hearing. The primary changes were that any proposed asphalt is now indicated as gravel. So we now have a pervious surface with a metal edge as curb to hold the gravel in place. So that's this sweep here. And then on the other side of the building where we had originally proposed stepping stones set in gravel, we've gone to a gravel walk with a metal edge. So there are no longer stepping stones in that area. And again, this is to not increase impervious area at all on the site. As both Ed and Michael mentioned, the driveway is sixteen feet wide as it currently exists. And we also had a comment from Kellard Sessions regarding the ADA spaces, and they have been changed to to two eight-foot wide stalls. One is just the apron that serves the space, and the apron, the unloading area, is adjacent to the walkway that connects to the front door of the building. And just a reminder, inside the building is an existing lift for the accessible apartment here. Additionally, since the last hearing, we added a plant list indicating the plant species, quantity, and size. And there were no changes really to the planting concept. It's still indicating ample screen plantings at the rear property line and ornamental native grasses along the fence line here, just to soften the existing fence. The in front of the building, we have robust foundation plantings and also basically on all sides of the buildings, we have mixed shrubs, perennials, evergreen, and deciduous, but they're low-maintenance plants. No existing trees are going to be removed. The only vegetation we're removing is just a little bit of bramble along the rear property line, and we just want to neaten up and create a bed line back here. So we're also proposing three new canopy trees, one, two, three, to add some shade. And again, as Ed mentioned, we're really trying to create a more residential feel here. We're trying to soften things and make it welcoming. Moving on to the landscape lighting, not much has changed with that. It's meant to be all low-level, low-voltage LED lights, fixtures that will blend into the landscape or complement the architecture of the building. We don't want anything that where the eye is drawn to the source of the light. And we we've been asked for photometrics. We will be providing that along with manufacturer cut sheets for any fixtures that we're specifying. So I think that about covers the changes since the last hearing. Are there any questions?
A couple of housekeeping concerns. One is the large existing tree that seems to overshadow the southeast corner. I think it's southeast corner. If you're proposing to put gutters up on the existing roof now, is that right, Ed, to?
Gutters are right there. They're copper gutters. They totally surround the roof in one gutter system, Jerome. It's really amazing with about eight down.
Yeah. I'm just addressing if that tree is actually overshadowing the roof, there might want to be some gutter protection to prevent leaves from blocking it and then causing runoff, overrun rather, and sheet flow. And the other thought I had on the gravel walkways, I know you're trying to minimize pervious surface, but that's going to be a devil to to keep safe and shovel during the winter season. It's, you know, there'll always be a residue of of snow which will freeze. So it's it's a it's a possible safety issue.
We agree. We'll we are trying to avoid DEP, Jerome, to be honest with you.
I understand.
Would it be possible to put in something like those, the honeycomb that look like like a chessboard? You know, that have gravel in between? Does that count as pervious? And would that be?
That's a possibility.
It counts as a percentage of impervious. And Jan, well, Jan can chime in on that.
The the honeycomb grasscrete paver, as I know, is acceptable to the DEP. They don't count it as impervious.
Okay.
It's just up to you whether you want to use that in in a walkway.
Well, that would be more stable, Jan.
Yeah.
Than a gravel, steel-edged walkway. We can take a look at that. It's not a problem.
Yes. Okay.
I just wanted to point out to Tracy that we're not, we don't need a photometric plan. After you presented last month, the low voltage lighting, if you could just give us a couple of sheets on those, a couple of light fixtures would be satisfactory to us. No need.
Yes. Thank you, Jan. We'll do that.
Okay, so I think now would be the time to open it up for public comment. I will let everyone know that we did receive one email, and that is from Steve Rogers. And as you can hear, it was already shared with the applicant as well as the board. I think there were three major areas. One was basically stormwater coming off of the Mandia, or proposed Mandia property. The second was stormwater that's already on the town right-of-way, part of that. The septic system was the major second quest, second issue, and then the dead tree that I did not see on Tracy's landscape. I don't know if there, if that is, perhaps somebody could address whether it's actually on the property or off the property? Or whether they're, they've noticed a dead tree out there?
Steve's email identifies it at the southwest corner of the property. I'm not familiar with it.
Yeah, I I can send you all pictures. It it is on the property, just beyond the property line.
Okay, I'm sorry. Steve, could you identify yourself for the recording so we have it? So.
Sure. Steve Rogers, sixty-nine Old Bedford Road. I live on the south side of the property under discussion. And the dead tree is dead this year, just on the other side of the property line. I've not measured it from the street, but it looks to be more than ten feet from the street. And it is right now, if it were to come down, it could come down on my power lines, the community house power lines, or depending on the way it falls, it could take out the two houses' power lines across the street because it's right next to a hole that services us all. So it just needs to come down. And, you know, I don't care who takes it down, the town or if Bruce wants to. But let me preface before I get into the dead tree. As Bruce knows, I've been supportive of this proposal in general, right? I think it's going to be more suitable to the neighborhood to be a residential property than the previous uses to the neighborhood. And so I applaud Bruce and his partner for turning this into a residential building. I just want to make sure that while we change the use, that we address the three things, at least the three things I've called out. On the stormwater, I don't know what dead flat, the definition of dead flat is, but when I look at the contour maps, next to the building is three feet higher than at the road surface, right? So if dead flat is a three-foot change, all right, that's dead flat, but water knows only one way to run, and that's with gravity. And my lived experience has been that water runs off of this property into the street, down the street, onto the reservoir dirt road, and has created quite a bit of erosion. I had to add soil to my front yard because my front yard was serving as a catchment basin for this property. And I don't know how many people have seen the video. I can play it for you. But I have video of that water from two years ago, and it continues. And in the packet, you'll find a picture, best looked at in color from this week, where you can see the dried dirt from that runoff from the last rain event, right? So it happens. It's my lived experience, right? And I invite anyone, actually, I invite the board to come walk down to the reservoir road and see the erosion pattern that has happened coming off of this property. The great and unfortunately, deceased Lou Cottone has written many a note, if you want to foil it, to the town about the runoff from that property. So it's not new news to any of us living here. So as we make changes to it, right? That should definitely be addressed. I know the McAdam parking out front is, because it's within the ten feet, is the town's to do with. But, you know, as we make changes to it, my proposal would be that the town But, you know, as we make changes to it, my proposal would be that the town tear it up. Because a lot, it catches a lot of rain too. In terms of stormwater and your, your filtration system, you know, I, I haven't studied it. But my property is at least, according to your contour maps, two to three feet lower than the side of the building. Again, I know water only run in one direction and it's not uphill. So my concern there is whatever changes we make, that it doesn't run onto the property. When it comes to the, um, septic, I appreciate that every effort's being made to put a modern septic in, right? Nobody wants a cesspool. And, you know, I think the, the moderate use of the building over time has made this.
That is the timer that says you've had three minutes. Um, could you, um?
Sure. So what was not addressed in Mr. Delaney's comment is the New York Department of Health that says that any area of containment must be, must be 200 feet away from an existing well, from the edge of that, that source of contamination. So, I mean, from the own, from the, the, the development plans themselves, I'm within 100 feet of the edge of the SDA. I'm with 150 feet from the center. As is, I know my neighbor's well across the street at 72 Old Bedford Road. And I'm not certain about 74 Old Bedford. But, you know, there are three wells that definitely need to be accounted for downhill, right? We've established water runs downhill from this property. And I'm happy to play the video if you haven't seen it, but you all have it.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, um, I think, Ed, did you want to comment? I, I know you don't yet have the Department of Health approval, but they have looked at this, your proposal.
Yeah, well, uh, Mr. Rogers, believe me, we have surveyed located your well. It's, uh, it, the State Department of Health and the County of Westchester, uh, in situations like this, have a term called direct line of drainage. Uh, you are not in that direct line of drainage. And we are replacing cesspools that are concentrated sewage points with a, remember a tank that's oversized. It's going to put into the ground a septic effluent that's much better than what's going on right now. So we have your wells, we have the wells across the street. We know where everybody's wells are. In fact, there are separation distances from our stormwater treatment systems also. But, but to break it down to the, uh, the, your concerns about, we are taking that entire roof drainage. A lot, a lot of it that comes out the front of the building that goes to your property. And we're redirecting it to the rear of the property. Uh, through using the same gutter system, blocking off the front downspouts and redirecting it to the rear. Uh, we are also going to take a lot of what's spilling off the rear parking lot that may or may not be going towards your property. And we're directing it into a center of the rear into the ground. So you should see, if we do our jobs correctly, a decrease in stormwater runoff. Now, the town, the town that owns the parking area in the front, which is all asphalt, I haven't seen what they want to do yet. So I can't tell you what's going to happen out there. Your petition to the town and that runoff from that parking area. And I, I remember seeing aerials from 2017, 2018, where we had like 20 cars parked all over this building at one point, including in the front of the building, where water will run down. I have the same problem here in front of my house where my curbs are shot. And the town drainage from South Salem is going out on my property. I'm dying for them to come back and give me more curbs to keep it going. And I think your, your concerns are certainly worthy of more initiation by the town to respond to you. But I think in the long run, we're, we're, we're making it a little better than it was. And maybe in some terms, a lot better than it was. And if, if you want to talk to me, I can meet you out there. I can certainly show you what our engineering is all about. We kept it to a minimum, except when it came to a sewage treatment system, where we oversized our tankage to make sure that it gets you a better septic product in the ground than certainly what's going on now. Uh, and I'd be willing, you can call me anytime. I can meet you out there. And I can definitely hopefully handle your concerns. Okay?
So, um, I, let's, I have not seen any other hands raised. I don't know, um, if anyone else has a comment at this point. Oh, I see, uh, Kevin Cottone or Cottone. So, um, I believe we have unmuted, uh, unmuted you. Kevin.
I'm unmuted now, no?
Yes, you are. Could you give us your, um, I might not have said your name right, your name and address, please?
We were close enough. Kevin Cottone, 58, Old Bedford Road, Goldensboro. Yeah, my, my concern was, uh, is confined to the, uh, the runoff from the property. Just the stormwater runoff. And, uh, I, the bulk of it that I see is from that piece in the front that the town still owns that's paved. And I know at the last meeting, um, you guys had said, nobody's indicated whether they want that left there or if it, it should be turned to grass. And I would say by all means, uh, as evidenced by, like Steve's video, it should be returned to grass. It cat captures a, a lot of water, a lot more, well, Mr. Delaney would understand how much water can get captured by, by pavement, and I'm sure a lot of you can. Um, it is destroying that, that lake road and, and what it's done, what the runoff has done. And the salt and what, that cove down there is very visible. Take a walk down there now. It is, it, it looks horrible down there. What a, what a mucky mire that's turned into. And all that water comes from that property. Now Bruce is, is reducing, I know he's taken out almost 1,100 square feet of pavement, which is great. And, uh, the prop, right now, the gutters from that roof, there's a lot of runoff from the gutters from that roof. That disappears underground and I see Mr. Delaney has that going into his new infiltration system. And what he just indicated was that that would be in the back. All of the runoff from the roof is going to be changed to a new system that runs off into the back, which is my understanding anyway, from what he just said. And, uh, right now it goes underground and like he had mentioned at the last meeting, nobody knows where it goes. And I don't know where it goes. I don't see where it's coming out anyway. It doesn't come out on anybody's property. It just goes underground. I guess into the soil, the soil is that good that it can absorb it all. But, uh, that piece there definitely in the front should go to grass. And if you were to go out there and look at that in a rainstorm, any significant rain, it is a river that runs down that road. It took out that whole corner of that road down there. Cars can barely make it around. Um, the, the late, what I call the lake road, which is really a town road, but I call it the lake road. It's not a, it's not a formal town road, but it's really getting, getting eroded really, really bad. So if you can do something with that, uh, the town can do something with that. They're reaping some financial reward from the sale of this. I think they should do something about that, about that road, that town road. And that, there's just so many people walking down there now. It drives me crazy. But there is a ton of people walking. That should really be, be addressed. And, uh, other than that, the, the dirt that Steve sees that, that washes down the road, that's coming from the side of the driveway where they had turned the, that single driveway into a two lane road when they were turning cars around for the, uh, the art center drop offs in the morning. And that, that gutter that they put that, that form next to that, because when they were driving off the pavement, that captures a lot of water, I think, that used to just go into the grass. And if that was eliminated and, and the water was allowed to go into the lawn next to the building, then I think that would be a big help because that gutter serves to put a lot of water.
That's the alarm again. Sorry, let me dismiss it.
And that's it. That's all I have to say anyway. That's, but that's something that has to be addressed. You've got to look at that road and, and seriously look at that. And it's an, it's unacceptable and it's unsafe. People get stuck down there. It's a bad situation. It's all coming from that property, but it's nothing that would prevent Bruce from moving forward. And I don't believe it's anything that Bruce can do much about. And I think any of the problems that I see on his end of it are going to be rectified by what he proposed anyway. So, uh, I, I wish Bruce good luck and I hope, uh, I hope you can get through the, and I'm sure you'll get through the stormwater stuff and the Board of Health stuff and everything else, because everybody else gets through it and you're a competent group, so that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, if anyone else wants to speak, they can raise their hand. Um, okay, I don't see any, any other, uh, any other raised hands. Um, Kirsten, have you gotten any emails from a planning, to the planning board, um, email on this?
No, just that Greg's muted. Sorry, Greg.
Okay, I'm back.
Yay. Okay, um, so, um, I think, uh, I do see that Steve has sent something on the group chat that says, what guarantees are there? Um, are my neighbor's wells in the line of drainage? They are not on the plans, question mark. Um, I think what we've, we rely pretty much on the Department of Health to, um, to assess both septic and wells. They are the experts far more than this board. And I think we, um, you know, we have to wait if they, certainly if they do not approve this, the more, uh, changes will have to be made to the plan.
Yeah, well, I think the point's well taken and perhaps those wells need to be, not perhaps, those wells need to be shown on the plan if they're.
The wells are shown on the septic plans that are presently in front of the watershed and Health Department. I certainly can show them on our plans.
What about across the street, uh?
Yeah, I got them, got them across the street, got them around the back, got Mr. Rogers, got, got the ones on the left and the right and the, so there's about four or five wells that come into play here, Jerome. And, uh, we, we show them on our plans.
Okay, so it's, but there are no wells, no radius is shown, uh, going, coming across the street. So that means there are no wells.
No, there are wells, but they're well outside the radii.
Uh, maybe that should be noted just for the record.
Well, we can, we can show that. It's on the wells, the well locations are currently under review by the Health Department. They survived the first round of reviews. We're in the second round right now. Uh, I, I would really have expected to get approvals by now, except for the downtime and everybody involved with the County Health Department. That, by the way, Jerome, was my first concern about, uh, and you know me, as far as where are all the wells around here? And where are all the septics? And where is all the stormwater? And so that's the first Eddie Delaney thing I did.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I guess I should ask, I don't believe we've heard from the CAC about this. I don't know if there are any comments you could shake, no, okay. So I'm seeing, um, John Wolf, who's the Chair of the CAC, as Shica said, you know. So, um, do we have any other comments by the board? And, or do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
There's an email around, Steve Rogers just sent a photo of that dead tree. So I sent it to the board.
Thank you.
Just, I guess I have one question. This kind of came up last time. Based upon the plans as they currently exist, is what opportunity is there to utilize the property for the tenants? Just from a recreational standpoint in the backyard?
Uh, Bruce or Meg, you want to, you want to chime in on this?
Sure.
Go ahead, Bruce.
He just muted himself.
Okay, so, uh, you know, our, our plans are ultimately to have a, um, community garden. You know, there'll be tables and chairs in the back, you know, going to be a lot nicer than it is right now with all the plantings that we're going to propose. That's basically it. I mean, if tenants, you know, I mean, we're very open to it and we're certainly extremely environmentally conscious. So, uh, if tenants have ideas, we would entertain them as well. But that's basically it, Richard.
Okay.
So Janet, I've given Kirsten all the proofs of, uh, the mailings, the certified mailings and the public notice and of the signposting. And on behalf of Bruce and Meg, I would ask the board to close the public hearing. Uh, we, we cannot close on the real estate transaction, purchase in the town until we have all the approvals from your board. So we're, we'd like to move forward.
Okay, so I think that the two things that I see that might still be here, um, that we're, would have possibly kept it open would be, one, um, if they, if, if it wasn't 16 feet wide, um, and you wanted a variance, you had to go to the ZBA. I've now been assured that it's, is 16 feet wide. And I guess we could ask if at any point the driveway isn't 16 feet, that you will put gravel down or something to expand the, or that, you know, that grasscrete or whatever it is down to make sure it is 16 feet. And then I think the other question is the loading, um, requirement, which again, the board can decide to waive. So that really wasn't a potential ZBA question. It's our, it's our question. But we could close the meeting and then decide what to do with that.
Yeah, we, we have Jan's May 14th memo and, and we're confident that all of his comments can become conditions of approval that we can meet them.
Yeah, I, I would make a motion that we close the public hearing. I think comments we've heard are valid regarding the drainage and, uh, and the septic and well situation. And it certainly will be looked at very seriously by the Department of Health, Westchester County Health Department. And, um, it would be subject, still subject to review. So I would, I don't know the comments and, um, that would be my foundation, proposal to close the public hearing.
And we could say, um, because of this unusual Zoom situation, that we close the, uh, public portion, the Zoom portion, but remain open perhaps for any written comments until end of May?
Thirty days usually.
Well, I, I, I would think, Janet, I, I think just given the, the, uh, you know, the fact that we are operating this way, I think it, it might be a good idea to close it, but for written comments. I would think, you know, maybe to June 1, which is, you know, the end of this week and the end of next. That way, you know, we're then poised to, to, to address this at the June meeting. You know, and have it, have a discussion based on whatever else may come in at that point in time.
I accept that as amended to the proposal.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second the motion as amended.
And so that's Rich. Okay. Any further discussion? I'm going to poll the board. Greg?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And this is Jan. I also say aye and yes to this. So we've closed the public hearing. Um, we have a draft resolution. Oh, we closed the public hearing, the verbal public hearing. We have left the, uh, availability for the public to provide comments through June 1st.
By submission to Kirsten.
By submission to Kirsten, uh, just to make sure everybody knows that. If you don't, it's, um, planning@lewisburg.gov.com. Okay, or by mail, I guess. Um, so we do have a resolution, a draft resolution. Um, thank you, uh, Jan, for preparing this. I don't know whether anyone has any comments or, uh, concerns about the structure of this.
Well, what would be the point of keeping the hearing open if we're going to, are we going to vote on a resolution?
No, not tonight. This is a draft to see if there are any changes before next time.
And if you have comments, you can send them to me. I just wanted to start something to get the ball rolling and to start kind of framing it out. So if you have any thoughts, feel free to email me and I'll incorporate.
Okay.
I think the one thing I would perhaps ask, Jan, you to follow up is the status of the, this dead tree and whether or not, you know, let's, let's find out if there is any planned action confirm that it's actually on the property and what may or may not happen with that for next time. I think that would be helpful to know.
Okay.
Any other comments, concerns? Okay, so we will look at the resolution in more detail next month. So with that, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to all the public who's worked with us to help, help us through this process to give us comments on this. The next item on our agenda is on the minutes on the minutes of April 21st, the rather lengthy minutes. Do we have any comments on that? Or do we have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
That was Jerome. Second?
All 48 pages, yeah, second.
All right, Rich. So I guess we'll go through again. Greg?
Well, assuming that there's no discussion, which I guess there isn't, then I would approve the minutes for April.
Okay, Rich?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And yes, I also approve them. So with that, our I'll say our next meeting date is going to be June 16th, 2020. And well, so I guess now we just look for a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Jerome.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Greg beat you to it, so.
Got my finger on the button.
So Greg? I guess we're, I guess we don't need discussion on this. Okay, motion. So do you approve the motion to adjourn, Greg?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Thumbs up. Okay, Jerome?
Yes.
Yes. And Maureen?
Yes.
And me too. So I think with that, the meeting is ended at age 34.
Great.
Oh, I guess.
Have a great Memorial Weekend.
Absolutely.